You have to click the screen.
Are we good to go? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council Meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 23rd. Adra, can you show that all council members are present along with our city administrator, our assistant city administrator, our attorney, our planner, and our engineer? At this time, I will ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, ensuring public religious stance, one nation, under oath, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Keith Knudsen, 6630 Odine Avenue Northeast, Atsigo. I have a five acre parcel which actually has been cut back considerably because I'm five acres along the gravel road and with wetlands in back and small lake in front. And DNR around and especially the problem, it's been a, I've been there more than 22 years, the last 22 years since consortium took over the acreage of the farm at the end. There's been continuous problems with drugs and other things and drug sales, drug buying, and they want to do it on my property. And I've had to go to court and I've had to fight in court for my property rights. I've actually had to pay to protect myself from false accusations, which is a continuous occurrence due to a few of the neighbors that do their business at the turnaround down there and they want to do it on my property, which they say it's a public road. Well, I love the city work, the, one of the city workers asked me if they could cut around onto my property about basically, this is the center of the road, it needs to that wall onto my property. People park there on my property to do all their dirty business. And I'm sure anyone here that if you've got your life's interest in this, you wouldn't want people doing dirty business on your property, stolen cars, fights, late night sexual stuff. I mean, it goes on and on and on. And I deal with this at least two times a week. And the one that pushes it is a neighbor that's caused me considerable problems for the last 20 years. One of the people that, there is about six neighbors around me that do their business there. And it's not looking at the ducks. And it's a continuous problem. So my, my request is, plus the neighbor next door built his driveway right on my north property line. My property is five acres long, basically with a small triangle, one acre deep. And I've got that road to deal with for 900 feet plus along there. And the turnaround back on the end there, you can see where, how much it cuts on to my, from the center property line. And the attitude is, it's a public road and that's what the neighbor next door has pushed on his associates to say. So my one request, as long as it's there, I would like to have no parking this side on the backside of the sign. That's in the turnaround because what they'll do is they'll sit there and they'll call me names and swear and I'll be on my property on the south acre. And I've got, I'd like to actually play this, what happened two hours ago, just to show you what I'm dealing with continuous. This, I mean, there was, it can be people that are official workers, like for Wright County, I mean, people that say they're taking their lunch, but they do it on the side, the no parking side. And there's two police officers that do regular things down there. And they will always write the report against me. They'll say, this guy likes to complain. This person was on a public road even though they refused to park. Then sometimes they'll tell them to park on the other side, but they will never give a ticket. So the people just keep doing it because there are no, there's no, there's no repercussions for it.
Keith, I'm just concerned we won't be able to see your video.
Yeah. License Gulf Foxtrot Kilo 215 parked on a no parking side.
This is something I deal with basically.
In front of my property here. Oh, check out the sign. Check out the sign.
Where? What sign?
You're on the, you're in no parking zone.
No, I see state wildlife management open to public hunting. That's what I see right here.
He's got no parking on this side. There's no parking on this side.
On what side?
This guy would have probably gotten a fight if his girlfriend wasn't there.
Yeah. Can you read? Are you able to read?
I just demonstrated it hooked on phonics works for me.
Yeah, well.
Wildlife management area.
Well, three, four C.
How many syllables is that?
Okay, I'm not going to tell you how to read. That's fine. I won't tell you how to read. Okay. You refuse to move. I say just read this.
Put this law down right here. The one that you own.
I'm not going to explain the property line to you. Just read the sign.
You're just going to hold your phone at me?
Just read the sign.
Make sure you get the truck in my name.
It is. JFK. Yeah. Hey, just, just read the sign instead of causing a lot of trouble.
I deal with this all the time. On my property. I'm on my property.
Are you, to pause it as the council member dark mole requested?
What's that?
Can you pause it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I missed the thank you.
We heard it.
The reason there's no parking, I can explain it, but the sign clearly says no parking this side. There's a long, there's a long reason for it. I'm not going to go into a long explanation, but you have to pay attention to the signs. Okay, all right. Well, take it easy. I'm telling you with what's happening in the world right now, you're going to have a lot worse to look forward to within 10 years. I guarantee it.
That's, that's it. I'm on my property. They've taken pictures of me on my, me on my property when they're driving by.
The question is to the attorney right now.
I'm not sure what this is offer. I mean, this is not a criminal proceeding, it's not being offered as evidence against this person. I'm not sure what it's offered to show, but I don't think there's an issue in terms of legality of playing it. I just don't think that it's necessarily, it's not going to go into the record at this time. There's nothing that the council can do to act on it. So I'm not sure how productive it is to play it at this time until the council has something before it that it could potentially act on.
I would like to point out, I have another SD chips with this type of thing on it to show the continuous ongoing problem I'm having with people intrusively coming onto my property. That's what I am, I want to say that I want that turnaround off of my property.
I know the gentleman's saying that he's reported to the police, but I would suggest that he take all these recordings and turn those over to the police so they can, the proper investigation, the council doesn't really have. If the allegation is that they're trespassing, the council doesn't have the authority to address that in this forum. It'd have to be addressed by the police department.
That's not what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is I want the turnaround taken off of my property. That's not a police issue. That's a city council issue. And to say nothing of the 15 feet that was taken off my property on the south side for the DNR and the 20 feet that was taken off the north side for the next door neighbor that had strings when he put his driveway right on my property line. So I've lost almost 50 feet of my property on both ends. Plus he took some off the back. Plus I got people doing the stuff on the road. It's my property line literally goes across the center of the road. So I'm getting, I'm getting taken all the way around and I'm having to fight to keep what little I'm trying to keep. I mean, I've, I've learned what sociopaths are like, people I've had to deal with. Anyway, that's basically what I have to say. I got a lot more to say, but that's what I'll say for now.
Thank you. Dan and Dave, could you report back on this 15 feet is referring to on the cul-de-sac? If there's a different option for us? And obviously send that out to both council or give us an update at the next council meeting. Keith, Jason Altman's is in the back of the room. He's with the Wright County Sheriff.
Okay, yeah.
I would advise that you talk with him. And I don't know if you already have, maybe he would be able to kind of.
I have in the past.
Okay.
And could I make one wordage correction? It's not a cul-de-sac. It's a turnaround. Because if it was a cul-de-sac, that's what they try to say in the police reports. Half of that round thing is my property line. That's the other thing I wanted to find out. They can put a fence right straight down the middle because I feel I need to do that at this point.
Mayor, you can't because there's a prescriptive roadway easement there. That's how the cul-de-sac or the turnaround has been constructed at that location. It is offset to the east side of that. We did work with the DNR to have that adjusted somewhat more off of Keith's property than it used to be. But there is prescriptive road easement on that line. So you can't put a fence right down the middle of the public street.
So what I'm asking for is that, that cutoff, they did cut it down there, but towards the left side? Trouble is, these people want to do their business on my property. So I ask that that straight line on the west side.
Mayor, that's something staff will have to review with Kevin and with the city engineer. So we can see what can be done.
Okay.
My best thing would be is if it was moved down onto that consortium property where they did all the drug stuff before where that house was. That's where I believe it should be moved down. I would like to get that, I still plan to get an attorney to get that 15 feet on the south, south side back and the 20 feet on the north side back. Either that or moving further down.
So Dan, if you'll give an update once you've met with staff and you can reach out to Mr. Knudsen and then we can get a report back. But otherwise, Keith, if you want to talk to Jason in the back, that's what I would, I would recommend you doing.
Anybody who wants to hear a feedback, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. But we're good. Thank you. All right. This is still the open forum portion of the meeting. Again, residents can come to the front. Yes?
Sign in Michael Steiner here in Atsigo.
Do you have your address, Michael?
10605 74th Lane Northeast, Atsigo 55301. And council and mayor, staff. I was here two weeks ago, probably recall, bringing up the whole issue on that trail. Unfortunately, aside from some survey stakes and a few more and a sign that says trail closed, even though it's never been open, I understand the liability issues. The contractor's not turned one spade up there, let alone a tractor and anything else. I have spoke with the city engineer, understand he's doing the other two sections of the contract. But he's not on a timely basis with those either. Okay. I was in hopes that he could, if someone started these subcontractors that he employs, I assume, to do some of the work, but that's not happened. The, as we were told two weeks ago, he'll be in non-compliance with the contract as of this Friday. He hasn't even started. We know there's a delay in the product that to do part of the work for the cement slabs and the drainage. Very disappointed personally. I'm not directing this at you. I'm just saying personally in terms of the project. And to see that this work has not gone forward. You know, I personally talked with him about two months ago and he guaranteed me that job would be done before school started. Well, that's going to take monumental work. It's not going to happen. As I look at this, I'm very concerned that this process, I was told by staff that there was approximately a 10 day time period over which a vetting process took place on this candidate for the contract. And then my mind, as I think of what went wrong here, I was here a year ago. Started the process, thankful for the vote, thankful for the city's recognizing the issue. Along with, as I've told you, the people that are over there. A good count would be great, but I got to estimate 500,000 people living over there plus the school. But unfortunately, and I've been told by two of you that we may have to wait till another year. So I do have this specific question as regards to if he's late and unless he can do something fantastic, miraculous, it's not going to happen by Friday, but it's a $300 a day penalty. So I'd like to know whether those are calendar days or workdays that he would be facing. You know, just rough California math, 30 times 300 is $9,000 a month if he's behind. And I've been told unless he's 100% completed, he's in non-compliance. I just would like to know. I don't think it's fair to the citizens of the city to have to be put back like this when we were hoping to be able to use it and then find the timeline continually changing. And to see the lack of as one individual and others that asked me, as I was just at the park today, another HOA president was asking, hey, what's the story? Yeah, well. Not good. I, so I would like to have the answer to that at some point as to how that reads for the city and if the city's going to follow through on that if he's late. And if he's late and it goes into September and October and November, does it continue? 19, 9,000, 18,000, $27,000 penalty if he's not doing the job. Because I for one am encouraging that we get the job done this year. We all know Minnesota, snow flies, cold weather, not good. But if that vetting took place and if it was done in a manner in which I'm not saying it wasn't, but professional. You know, if you're going to build a swimming pool, a hot tub, a deck, a house remodel, you get recommendations. You do your due diligence. And I'm thinking 10 days vetting, huh? New guy. He's not been there before, yet it went through. Maybe you can explain to me how that vetting exceeds itself. I don't think that represents the city well to our citizens to know that. That kind of a process takes place and the guy passes muster. Yet he's dropped the ball. He didn't order for six weeks the materials he needed. He's behind on the project he's doing now. That portion, not far from here. I'm not making anything personal to anyone, but I am saying you're our council. You speak to our staff to do projects for us, the citizens. And to be told these things. We have 80, almost 90 year olds who are in wheelchairs over in that facility. Those were some of the first units built. Talked to one who's been there 16 years, just this afternoon. So I'd like to know how that part is handled. I've been told you can't drop him off of it as long as he shows he's responsible and he's doing some work, so he's responsible. I'm not an attorney. I don't know how that works. But to me, that's not responsible because he's behind even on the project he's doing on the reworks. Can you tell me what can be done? Because all I've heard are a number of things. And I don't mean this impolitely, whether it's reasons or excuses or explanations. We can't do anything. He's out there. We're not going to do anything to him. Has he specifically been told that he's in danger of these penalties? I heard one word that said, well, that was kind of a suggestion or kind of a, you know, he had to get the, you know, the clue. I don't know. Is he going to claim, well, the city didn't remind me I've got that in my contract? Has anybody sat down and really talked with the guy? On the phone, he specifically promised me that, just like he signed the contract and promised our city. I don't think he takes it very seriously at all. There's a lot of people that were counting on this and others that would take advantage of it once they know about it. I say that in a proper manner, take advantage, they would use it. I really don't want another year personally. I just encourage, you've got professional staff here. You've got professional people. You're intelligent folks. Does it come down to one man, our attorney? Is it, is it a group thing? What is it? How come the guy can't show up at a meeting? I don't know that he's been professionally encouraged, strongly encouraged. Get with it. If he's on his first go around.
Can I make some comments, Mr. Steiner?
Please do.
He is aware that he has a deadline. I have spoken with him myself since the path off of Paige is in my backyard.
Okay.
So for you to think that we aren't talking to him, he's very aware that he needs to do it.
I didn't intend to say you weren't. I asked a question.
It was your question and I'm answering it.
Thank you.
And he is aware what his repercussions are, but as of right now, he still is within his contract. He has until Friday.
Right.
So as far as us asking for things right now, I mean, do I think he's going to get it done? Unless he plans to work overnight, every night and get Paige and Odine done, I don't know if that will be done. I'm not the contractor. But our staff is working with him to let him know that we are very serious that this needed to be done.
Okay.
Now, as far as Paige and Odine, those are paths that are ripped up now that are used for kids that take buses. The path over by you is a brand new path that has not been in existence, which like you had said, you came in a year ago, requested it. We supported it, the park erected and the city council did to construct it. Our, our concern right now is to obviously get all those projects done. But right now we have trails that are, will be used this first day of school to get kids on and right now it's black dirt. So we are taking this very seriously. Am I happy that nothing got ordered when we signed a contract with them? Absolutely not. But for us to talk about what we're going to give him in damages right now is premature because he has until Friday. So that would be a council decision and our attorney will be heavily involved along with our planner and our engineer on that. So we are taking this very seriously and I appreciate that you have fire in your belly for this. I appreciate that because sometimes residents will come and then we never see them again. But please know that all of us up here take it very seriously and, and I'm as unhappy as you are. Because people are walking on dirt right now in my neighborhood, trying to get somewhere and/or walking on private property. Tom, you got a comment?
I might just have a follow-up. So let's say he doesn't get it done by Friday. We don't know when the materials are going to arrive, but it might be five or six weeks from the previous date, but will there still be an expectation that he continue as long as weather permits to complete it this fall?
And Ron is shaking his head. Ron, can you comment?
Absolutely. We expect him to finish the project this year. We still have September, October to get this work done. He's making some progress on Page Avenue. He's making progress on Odine Avenue. Is it at the rate we'd like to see? Absolutely not. But he said he'd have pavement on both of those, on Page by August 31st, which is before school started. That's what he told me today. I have a man in the field that's in nearly constant contact with him several times a day. Checking on his work and trying to figure out his progress and what his schedule is. I talk to him about once a week myself personally. And I talk to you about once every two weeks personally. It's just, you know, we don't have the bulldozers. We have a contractor. So we're administering the project. When he's in default, bring the the attorney in. Send out the letter saying he's in default. This is how much it is going to be potentially per day. Probably is going to be the max. I'm sure the council's listening to this, knows what the work that's left to be done and is probably understanding of all the issues that have come up. And we'll run that point through when we get there. Till we have the total number of days that he's in default, we can't even figure out what the max penalty. So, and the reason I told you would be next year is if we were to pull a performance bond, that would have to go out for bid again. And there's just not enough time to do that whole process. And as long as he's working towards the finished product, even though it's late, we have a lot of contractors that go late. And we have to assess, I'm not saying a lot, but we have projects that go over by a week, two weeks. Then we talk about the liquidated damages that go with it. It's a process every single time with these contractors. And we did look at him and ask questions and call up his, you know, his contacts, which none of more cities, they were local or just private contracts. But we're required by state law to go with the lowest responsible bidder. And then we have to prove that he's not responsible. And that is a high standard. To tell someone that they're not, are responsible. And then if they, they can come back with some sort of damage against the city, we're calling you unresponsible. So that there, Ron, this question. If he is not able to without getting deemed that that information Correct. I'm sure if he ever, say contractor does go over his time and he goes for another project, I will get a call from the city engineer and I would tell him that he was late on the project. But at that, if that's the truth, I'll just point out the exact facts of our project. Correct. Well, that's actually what I was trying to explain to Mr. Steiner is that unless we, unless we work with, the quickest way to get this still done is through the contract.
Right.
Okay. Well, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Appreciate your responses.
Absolutely. All right. We saw in the open forum portion of the meeting, do we have anyone else that would like to speak? All right. And we will close the public hearing and move on to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Mayor, would you please add item 5.2 billows at Kittredge Crossings?
I did have, and what I would like to add was the no co-update, but I'm going to take that off from being added since we've gotten the update from Ron Wager that we're all on the same page with that. I just wanted to add that, but I feel as though we got enough information during open forum. Is there anybody else that needs to add anything or delete? Tom? Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item three is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 4.1 is a series 2021 bond issuance. I will turn this over to Adam. Jessica's also here.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So today, the city received proposals on the bond sales that you authorized at the previous meeting. So without further information from me, I'm just going to pass it over to Jessica Green with Northland Securities and you have the bond sale summaries that were distributed in front of you and I'll share those on the screen.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Long time no see. As Eda mentioned, here tonight to present you with the results of your bond sales that we held this morning. Before we get into the sale summaries, I'm just going to really quickly touch on the rating report that's in your packet, if that's okay with Council?
Yes.
Great. So as Council likely saw, the rating came back for both of the issues at double A plus with a stable outlook. This is the same rating that the city has received for the last number of bond issues that you've undertaken. So this was the rating that we were expecting and hoping to see. So congratulations on maintaining that very strong rating. We've gone through these reports in the past and as Council's aware, a rating agency tends to look at specific areas in terms of the economy, financial performance for the city, et cetera. So we've got a lot of nice comments in this report. Overall, when they were looking at the economy, they clearly consider the city's economy to be considered very strong, really noting all of the growth that the city's been experiencing over the past few years and looking at the overall financial performance of the city, noting the fact that the city has noted or experienced, excuse me, a number of surpluses over the years. This is due to some conservative budgeting or the main driver here being that conservative budgeting when it comes to building revenues or building permit revenues and exceeding those for the last number of years, three, four, five years in a row, which of course is seen as a credit positive. And then we also looked at some of the city's policies and practices, strong score came back for that particular area. And then we also looked at future borrowing related to the West Wexler water facility project. Obviously that is going to be a sizable project. That being said, when we spoke about that in the rating call, it's, it's very clear that when the analysts were discussing the rating in their committee, that they felt that the forethought that the city has put into this project and others, of course, in planning for that large project and looking at rate increases, et cetera, so that you're not putting pressure on your operating budget and that those utilities are going to remain self-supporting. So again, credit positive there. I am happy to take any questions that you have on the report, but again, just want to extend our congratulations on these cases that's been rated.
Any questions? Tom?
Yeah. Just wondering if we have also the stable offer on the 2021 A. And if you credit that. What curious, if he has to.
Yep. That's a great question. And a lot of cities talk about this, especially when you're only one notch below that triple A level. And there are certain things that you can do to control that, the rating in total, but certain things that are outside of the city's control, such as the per capita market values, the wealth indices that they look at. So oftentimes, and you do have a scorecard that you can see on page five where they kind of go through the various areas that they look at in each bucket. So in the case where some of those values are under the peer values that they're looking at, or say other triple A rated cities, you can do some things to mitigate that. And some of, sometimes that's increasing your reserves to a level that mitigates those markets or the, those economic metrics that they look at. But then you get into a situation where you're looking at, okay, well, how much do we need to raise those reserve levels and does that mean that we're effectively overtaxing or does that mean that we're not keeping, you know, the level where it should be? And then, of course, you need to maintain those levels for a number of years. So it would take some time to get there. And I think there's actually a note in here about the fact that, yeah, the, it's, this is on page two, it's towards the bottom of that same paragraph that you referenced, again, that the local economy is very strong and trending in a positive direction. So it could be said that, and again, their, their stable outlook is reflective of near term, so the next year or two. But if you continue to see a lot of this growth that you're experiencing, we see a lot of suburbs that have gotten into that triple A category based on the market values that are increasing and of course, again, wealth indices that they look at. So it's not to say that you can't get there, but I do believe that kind of the, along the lines of what you're saying is correct, that right now it may just, the city may be too small to reflect the market value that we've seen in some other peer cities without, again, increasing those reserves to 100% of your expenditures per year, which of course the city doesn't need. And the thing to remember too, is that that probably gets you a five basis points difference in your bond sale. So is increasing the reserves to that level really worth saving a few thousand dollars in interest? Probably not. But, but of course, it is certainly something to shoot for and want to achieve. And personally, I believe the city is on the path to get there. Not, not hard at all. Absolutely. And we can pull info, I think going back to the late eighties. So, yeah, we can absolutely look into that. Any other questions? Okay. You bet. Okay. So then we will go on to the sale summary for the series 2021A. So as Council is aware, this particular issue is meant to partially fund the new water tower project that is currently underway and then also pay the cost of issuance associated with this issue. So we have looked at this as a 15-year structure with relatively level principal and interest payments throughout. Of course, there is the general obligation pledge here, however, the bonds are anticipated to be paid from net revenues of the water utility. Competitive sale this morning, so of course we took bids. We had four bids come in on this issue with Baird out of Milwaukee being the low bid. Rating, of course, is that double A plus. You've got a final maturity out in 2037, but you do have a call feature beginning February 1st of 29th, so you can call that in and hold or in part at that point. The par amount in this table that you've got in the lower section of the page, so we started out when we reviewed this a couple of weeks back, it was at $4,575. We did receive some premium on this issue, so we were able to downsize the bonds here to $4,345. In terms of the all-inclusive costs, we had anticipated 1.44 and we actually ended up at 1.40, so a drop of four basis points. And then the true interest cost came from 1.34 down to 1.31. So a nice drop. You've got your bid tab on page three, so you can see those four bids that came in. That bid by Baird, a pretty large syndicate there, I would estimate without counting these, probably about 20 different underwriters bidding in that same indicate or syndicate, excuse me. So, and that's oftentimes what we see coming from that particular underwriter, so no surprise there. And then going on to page four, I'll go through this one pretty quickly. So you've got at the top, your sources and uses, of course, par again, $4,345. We had 251, 11805 in premium. And as we talked about at the last meeting, what that means is that investors will give you cash in order to get a higher stated rate on the bond with a coupon. So when we look at that pricing summary in the middle, you'll see that stated coupon in the early years at 3%. However, the yield is where we want to pay attention, that's what is factored into in that true interest cost. So we start at .12% and we go out to 1.45, again, with that average true interest cost of 1.31. And then on the remaining pages, you've got your debt service schedule and then a couple of different graphs, just so you can see kind of how the market's been behaving, both in the recent five-year history and then also going back about 20 years or so. Very obviously, we are in a very low interest rate environment. With that, any questions that I can answer on the 2021A series?
In the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the resolution and your packets were draft ahead of, as the proposals were just received this morning. We didn't have the final par amount for the bond. Yeah, we'll make sure that the final version reflects in the minutes.
Any other questions?
Moving on to the series B, this is par amount here, $7,390,000 in general obligation, water and sewer refunding bonds. So the proceeds here are going to be used to current refund the series 10C bonds that are outstanding. We talked about this a little bit, got down into the weeds on weighted average maturity and maintaining that, so I won't get into that again. But overall, what we've done here is we've structured this with maximum savings in mind, also in an effort to keep the weighted average maturity lower than what's currently outstanding on the 10C. And what that means is that we have smaller amount of savings than we do on the longer end of the bonds. That being said, we had a great result here today. So when we reviewed the finance plan at the last meeting, we had anticipated a true interest cost of .59% and we ended up at .34%, which is just so incredibly low. That being said, on the bottom, you've got a chart there, so we were estimating $446,720 in savings and we are coming away with $496,333 in total. In this one, we had five bids and it was Raymond James out of Tennessee, that was the low bidder there. So that is who we are recommending that the bonds are awarded to. More premium on this one than we had thought we would see. We thought we'd see 4% coupons, we actually have 5% coupons. So that's why we were actually moving that par amount down a bit. I believe we were at $7,595 and we are now at $7,390 as 851, 86, 85 was received in overall premium. And then, let's see, page five is where you'll see that debt service comparison. So in the years 22, 23, and 24, you're right around $50,000 in savings on an annual basis and then that kicks up to about 170 in the years 25 and 26 for that total savings of $496,332, 62. This one does not have a callable feature just because it matures in 26. So if we were to add that, that would have caused the rating, or excuse me, the interest rate to go up and we didn't want to impact that. So that being said, you've got the same charts at the back for this sale summary as well. Again, just looking at how rates have been behaving in recent years. Happy to take questions on the series B bonds.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Tom, seconded by Jessica. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Second that. Motion by Tom, seconded by Jessica. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Adam, for, nice work. Nice work. And thank you, Jessica, for all your work too. All right, moving on to item 5.1, Hanson Heights.
Thank you, Mayor. Henry Hanson is here this evening with you, requesting approval of a planned development and preliminary plat, as well as a final plat and approval of a development contract for the 92 acres located northeast of Odine Avenue and 70th Street, County Road 38. This property is guided by the comprehensive plan for low-density residential development consisting of single-family lots. It was zoned to R4 District in 2019 with an initial preliminary plat for the site and it's surrounded by existing urban development to the north, northwest, and east within Crimson Pond's West, Ashwood, and Boulder Creek, respectively. Limbar Estates is to the southwest of the development and then you have adjacent undeveloped property. As I said, there was a preliminary plat approved for this site in 2019. That was 123 single-family lots. Developer has a new builder and made some revisions to the highlighted portion of the plat to increase the number of lots to 131 basically by designing lots to meet the minimum width requirement, narrowing them up a little bit and not affecting the street layouts or any connections or any alteration of setbacks or other requirements. So it's a technical change to the plat that still complies with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Access to the plat is still primarily off 75th Street or Odine Avenue. There are two, the two existing conditions into Limbar Estates that were provided for when that subdivision developed and then at some point in the future, there will be connections going to the east of this development that would connect up with Peril at the southwest corner of the Boulder Creek development at County Road 38 where Wright County has access spacing. Developer will provide two trees per lot within the subject site. They'll also have buffer yard landscaping along Odine Avenue, 78, 75th Street, and County Road 38, along the rear of those lots and side of those lots along Odine Avenue. Now they'll grade the site in accordance with the city's requirements and those plans were reviewed by the city engineer. Have their review as part of your packet. Utilities are being extended from the northeast corner of the site and we want to note that access to those utilities will require temporary closure of 75th Street to access them and then replacement of the pavement, but that'll be a short project to basically just bring those utilities into the site to serve the first phase of 65 lots. And with the first phase, utilities will also be extended through the site to Odine Avenue, board under Odine Avenue, so there will be sewer access of the city's fire parcel, either for the fire department or to enable the sale of the balance of the property for development. So it's positive that the first phase has been expanded to include that utility work can help the city move forward with its goals on that. There are drainage and utilities over stormwater facilities at the perimeter of lots as required by subdivision ordinance. Park dedication will be satisfied as a cash fee in lieu of land. It's noted that the outlot at the northeast corner, which backs up to the trail that's along Wolfave Creek Greenway, that will be deeded to the city and the city will have the ability to construct a trail basically from the internal streets of this neighborhood to connect to the existing trail on the greenway. So this will enable the people within this neighborhood, as well as Limbar Estates, to act. So this will enable the people within this neighborhood, as well as Limbar Estates, to access the park facilities in the area. City staff is recommending approval of the application based on consistency with the comprehensive plan and requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. The planning commission held a public hearing last Monday on the sixteenth. There were a number of property owners directly adjacent to the development that spoke. Those property owners had also provided land that are incorporated as part of the project as well. But the planning commission closed the public hearing and had no concerns. In fact, they didn't discuss a single item about the project, they just voted seven to zero to recommend your approval. Findings of fact are included as part of your packet with conditions on the plat application, as well as resolution approving the development contract as drafted by the city attorney.
Does a developer wish to comment? I mean, you waited here all night, so if you want to talk, come on up.
Mayor, counsel, I can answer questions, but he summarized it pretty good. So we've worked through everything, added some lots to satisfy our, our, our home builder. Then, be fast and efficient.
One question I have on Seventy-Fifth with the closure to punch utilities through, how long will that, do we anticipate that to be closed?
I think it's gonna be hard to say. We're gonna, we're gonna find out. It depends on whether or not we have to de-water or not, you know, for that time. So we're kind of figuring that out right now. It is very dry, so if we do get to it this fall, I wouldn't imagine it taking much time at all.
A few days, or, I mean, I just...
I think by the time we tear into it, do the connection, we gotta get back off of that connection a ways because of the deep cut that we're going to be doing coming into the property. So we'll have to lay so that we'd be able to open, cut it, and lay it all back in. I would say probably ten days at the most.
I just, you know, obviously with school starting, you heard, very big concerns with trails and getting kids to school, so obviously that affects a route to get, you know, the kid coming from the east going over to the west. So I just wanted that.
Yeah, I think that might be excessive, ten days, but, you know, I, I would, it just greatly depends on how wet it is. Because that, that's one of the deepest parts of our, of our project, and coming onto the site as well, because that bill goes way up there, so. I feel like ten days would be more than adequate, but we'll try to do it as fast as we can.
There's two locations, too. There's also Water Main, further up near Odine, to make the loop into the, loop for the Water Main. That one's not as deep, and then there's no water. That one will probably take a couple days to get it back to travel. While they're still working on the deeper one, but give some access.
Yeah, less, less struggles on that one.
Okay. Tom?
Oh, they get five gold stars, all five. It's been seamless, it's been seamless. I, you know, when we went, when we went through and got a preliminary plat, you know, with developing, it's always, there's so much effort and work that goes in on the front side, you know, with all the wetland stuff and mitigating, and storm sewer, and holding ponds, and, you know, soil samples and testing, whatever. It's been very, one of the, one of the easiest ones I've done. So they've been great to work with, very knowledgeable.
Oh, this? The city already owns this piece. That was dedicated when Crimson Ponds West came in, because they had to put some of the street to the north of that, and then it was a remnant with just wetlands in it, so it was deeded to the city at that time. Correct.
Any other questions? Then a motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, dear.
Motion to approve a preliminary plat, P U D dash C U P, and final plat for Hanson Heights, subject to the conditions stated by the findings of fact and decision and adopt resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixty-eight, approving a development contract.
I second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Tom? Did you say Ron? Wait, what did, what did he say?
So the one he talks to all the time.
Oh, God.
And then she left.
Sabrina laughing. Look at Ron getting all red, look at him.
I thought he said Ross, but...
Ross was like...
I thought she was laughing.
Ross was probably like, where's the trail to the park?
Right there, Sabrina.
Oh, that's funny.
Any more comments? All those in favor, in the five, I say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Oh, good. You, well, it was pretty funny, I mean...
Sabrina thought it was funny.
Ron's gonna be like, another gold star for me. Dan, you need to try harder.
You don't pay me to be nice.
All right, moving on to item five-point-two, the villas at Kittredge Crossing. Dan, you passed out a memo breath on that.
Yes, there was a request for council action added to the agenda. The final plat was approved back in March of this year with a hundred days to execute that. The developer had requested extension to August next week. Today, they submitted a request to extend that to September thirtieth. They need to close on their financing mid-month next, in a few weeks. And then after that, they'll be able to execute the development contract and record the final plat. City staff is recommending approval of the extension.
Questions? Tom?
Mayor, they'd have to come back to extend it. Typically, we don't have an issue with an extension, other than to keep track of it. Also, when it gets near the end of the year, if it's gonna flip past the calendar, then all the fees go to the next schedule.
Second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? As I said earlier, just, I mean, obviously Ron and, and Dave will be waiting for updates on the trail. So we'll, we'll get that from them.
Relax, there we go.
All right, well, yeah. Tom?
They had some of the same issues, they had dewatering that they had to perform down there. It probably could have been, I think it was opened as soon as we had gravel across it.
It was like over two weeks.
But then it had to be closed for a day or so to put the pavement back on. But it, it was about that ten-day timeframe, so it'd be stocking them all here. It, it really has to do with, they have to, they have to go in there and dig and then put the dewatering pumps all the way around it, and then wait for the water. That's most of the time, it's really not construction. It's the drawdown of the water, and then they go and work, how it works. Now, on this site, watering, watering outside, like, oh. Well, they'll be, they'll dig out an area of Seventy-Fifth, put in the dewatering wells, and then wait a few days to check, you know, how far it's down, and then start digging once it's dry. So most of it is that timeframe of waiting for the pumps to be there.
And I just brought that up, just because Seventy-Fifth is a main, it, it gets used heavily now for all of the Crimson Pond people, so...
The detour will be, of course, Odine up to Eighty-Fifth and then back down Page. Of course, there's a residential street or two that you could get around.
I was gonna say, they'll go through Seventy-seventh.
Seventy-seventh will be the unofficial detour. We can't help, but it'll happen.
Right. But that's what they'll end up doing, it's just, it's more for those buses, you know?
Yeah. At the time when it was put in, we could have put stubs out, but the property owner was, was not receptive to water and sewer, so we would have had to buy more easement just to put the water and sewer out on that property.
Any other council reports or updates? All right, moving on to these on updates, heritage preservation, Brittany?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything.
Parks and Rec Commission, we just had that last week. We went through kind of park master plan items with ball fields. The commission had a lot more questions on that, on an overall build-out, so Ross will be bringing back more information in the next meeting on that. Planning Commission, Tom?
Mayor, they withdrew their application. The, the planning commission voted seven to zero. And so after talking with the developer, following that meeting, they just chose to withdraw the request.
So when they withdraw, they, can they come back for a certain amount of time? Or does it have to be drastically different?
So anytime it's a comprehensive plan amendment, there's no limitation on how frequently you could come back, because that's governed by state statute.
Sure.
If it's a rezoning request under our zoning ordinance, that's limited, that you can't come back unless it's substantially changed.
Anything else, Tom? Okay. Public safety, Tina?
Public safety, we had our meeting, and we were talking about the Furry Festival, which will be here September fourth, or, I mean, yeah, no, that's September fourteenth. Eighteen, thank you. I'm like, that's what you did, eighteen. And so we were discussing that, if we have a park and where we're gonna be located. So I think we've got that situated at this point, so the guys are gonna look into that a little bit further. We have our cleanup September fourteenth, which is our next meeting, so that starts at six, and then our regular meeting starts at six-thirty.
All right, we will move on to staff reports and updates. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to share tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, Audra. Sorry, you're under the weather. Sabrina?
Mayor and Council, I don't have anything.
Dave?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Heritage Hills, if you've driven by there, been in there, so looking, I'll put it in Ross's words, amazing.
It, it looks really, it looks really good.
But, yeah, the curb is in, looks really good. They're doing the final work on the class five, it should be paving here in the next few days, so. It's coming along very well.
The residents have been very impressed with the communication that they've gotten from the contractor.
Yeah, they've been very good at that, along with us sending out letters from the city, letting them know what's going on. And, you know, our construction observers said that all of the residents have been receptive, parking on the street, everything has been very smooth. I think that may have to do with the amount of the assessments, the, the, and they're getting new curbs. So it, it does look really good.
Can you just have them bring their extra black cop and just stick those trails in?
I don't have a deep enough voice, so I can't really...
It's not loud, Audra, train them in.
All right, Dan?
Mayor, happy to report nothing.
Jason?
Jason, gotta go to Keith soon then after. I said you get to go to Keith soon then after, I assume.
We may suffice with a phone call, but Rockwoods had their concert last night. We typically call it bleed over, so to speak, is when we have a large event and how that relates to patrol cases. And so we had a large event, we had some extra staff that was brought on by the event. Basically, no major issues as far as the event goes. They have like a medical or something to that effect, kind of a minor thing. Otherwise, the only bleed over was the traffic-related deal after the concert was over. So that was really the only thing that, again, called bleed over.
Do they pause during, like, the lightning events and stuff like that, or?
It just completely, kind of depends on how they ended up doing it. I'm not exactly sure what, how, it's kind of one of those things, those, you know, the weather was supposed to come in, and it was another one of those, here we go, we're gonna have this big storm, and then kind of as we're dealing with it, it really wasn't as large as everybody expected it to, but apps were saying, so. Definitely one of those storms that, depending on which side of the city you were on, you're completely dealing with a different, that is, so. The only real major case that we're working on right now, we're currently labeling it as a criminal damage property. It's a fancy way of saying vandalism. However, the reason I say we're, we're labeling it that for now is we're not gonna hit the panic button on it. Three places in between Monticello and Otsego, somebody basically came home to a shattered window and or door, glass door, and found that it was because of a bullet. We thought it was interesting that these three incidents all happened within a short window of each other, and certainly coincidence, I don't know, I'm not gonna go with the coincidental route, I guess, at this point. So we're trying to investigate what exactly is going on with that. We don't have any reason, there isn't any backstory that we've been able to determine so far to find some sort of severe criminal intent. So we're working on that, and we've got a few things that we're trying to investigate there. Like I said, three, that kind of goes against... What's that? Right, we can't quite figure out, there are a few times, you know, we've, in, in our history, we've dealt with a few sporadic moments where all of a sudden people will wake up and all their car windows are shattered down a certain street. Or there's a, you know, a group that'll go around, and they, they will go shoot out with paintball guns or BB guns, pellet guns, whatever, but in this case, they're legitimate bullets, one was a nine-millimeter. So, and we were able to have our crime scene guys go up there and retrieve it. So we'll, we're taking it as seriously, seriously as we can. We're actually gonna go through bullet analysis, through the ATF, and figure out exactly if that bullet that's been fired is just like a fingerprint, you can trace it back to the exact gun. So we're gonna go as far as we can with it to figure out what's going on. So.
Concerning.
So, yeah, and again, it's concerning, however, it's like we don't have that story to be like, oh, yeah, this is why it's going on, so that's why it's kind of confusing, concerning, but not coincidental.
But no injuries.
Nobody's been hurt, and I think two of the three, nobody was even home. So it's kind of interesting, so. In the evening.
Were they along major, same routes?
Um, I will, I will say, there really wasn't any way for any of the three of them to just kind of weasel their way through if they were a higher-density area. So, we'll get to the bottom of it, we'll come there.
Anything else?
In the interest of time, no.
Is there any updates on the speeding on Packard?
I have got zero traffic stops that have occurred. So I've spoken with a few of the residents, just bringing up, this is where we're at with it, and I think they're understanding in that the timing just stinks sometimes.
Have they seen any incidents that you guys have not been there? Or there has not been any movement?
I had asked that, I'm like, what are we missing?
Right.
And they said, no, you told us to call, we were gonna call and take photos of it, and we're, said, nothing's going on, so. So I'm sure it's, it's like everything else that I'd seem to, the second I say something about it, we'll pull resources away, and then, and that's when it hits.
Well, thank you. Thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything? Otherwise, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending. And we will resume our special meeting upfront.